About ten seconds. Okay, we're good.
Okay, I will call the meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission to order for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at eight thirty a.m. Secretary Redusco, would you please call the role?
I believe that's March third, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. March third.
March third. Commissioner Idukas?
Here.
Commissioner Boyston? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Boyston?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Chair McPhail?
Here. Okay, shall we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Ready, begin.
My pleasure with allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda, public comments. Time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Secretary Redusco, do we have any?
I don't have any, uh, public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Item number five. Approval of minutes for February tenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Um, Commissioner McPhail, please separate the, uh, minutes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I can only vote on one of those sets of minutes, so please separate them.
No problem. Uh, the minutes for February tenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have to approve.
Yeah.
Moved by Commissioner Boyston, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any discussion? Seeing none. So, Secretary Redusco, will you pull, pull, poll the board, please?
Commissioner Idukas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyston?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chair McPhail?
Aye. Okay, approve passes five oh. Approval of minutes for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Boy, everybody's quiet today.
Move to approve.
Moved by second, uh, Commissioner Boyston, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Please call the, poll the, uh, commission, Secretary Redusco.
Commissioner Idukas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyston?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Abstain.
Chair McPhail?
Aye. Motion carries four oh with one abstention. Item number six A has been pulled. So we'll move to item six B. Case number BL twenty dash zero zero five oh and PL twenty dash zero zero five one. Applicant, Channel Islands Community Service District. The applicant requests approval of a conditional use permit with parking modifications and associated conditional voluntary merger to merge multiple legal lots to one legal lot to redevelop Channel Islands Community Services District Administration and Operations Facility. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding the agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please exclude any substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on the matter. Secretary Redusco, would you please poll the board?
Commissioner Idukas?
I have no disclosures.
Vice Chair Boyston?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Garcia?
No disclosures.
Commissioner King?
No disclosures.
Chair McPhail?
No disclosures. At this time, I'd like to turn the, uh, floor over to Case Planner Christina Borio. Christina, you're on.
Thank you, Chair McPhail. Uh, Commissioners, uh, for the record, I am Christina Boero, uh, planning staff, um, here to present conditional use permit case number PL twenty dash zero zero five zero and conditional voluntary merger case number PL twenty dash zero zero five one. And the applicant again is the Channel Islands Beach Community Service District. So please allow me to share my screen.
I apologize, Christina.
Oh, it's, it's okay. Um, can the, uh, commission and the public see my presentation? Yes, okay, great. Let's see how I can move this along.
Commissioner McPhail? Or Chair McPhail?
Yes, Commissioner King.
Never mind, it just sho- showed up on the screen. I was just gonna say we needed to, uh, let the public know how they can comment, but.
Yes.
Leonard Boero is, uh, ahead of us on that score.
Thank you. So if any member of the public would like to make a comment on this agenda item six B, please email your comments with two hundred fifty words or less to planning dot PC comments at Ventura dot org and they will read the rec- and they will read, um, the comment into the public record. My presentation today will focus on the project itself, the project background, the proposed CUP request, the proposed parking modification request, the conditional voluntary merger, and the environmental review and recommended actions. The project site is located in the community of Hollywood Beach at the corner, on the corner of Santa Monica Drive and Panama Drive on a zero point three four acre parcel. Naval Bay Ventura County is located immediately east of the project site. The project site has a general plan designation of residential beach, a coastal area plan designation of residential beach, high six point one to thirty-six, uh, dwelling units per acre, and a zoning designation of residential beach harbor. This project site is located within the, within an established residential community comprised of single and multifamily dwellings. The existing district facility includes two buildings, an administration in the south more, southwest corner um, of the project site and the operations building in the northeast corner. On-site storage and equipment for the district is located in the center of, of the, uh, project site. Currently, there is limited parking for district employees and the public. Parking is available along Panama Drive and Hollywood Drive in the northern portion of the project site and along Santa Monica Drive, where the parking area contains perpendicular and parallel spaces. So for the permit history, um, the building was moved onto the site for office space in nineteen sixty-six. The Coastal Commission approved a coastal plan development permit in nineteen seventy-eight for expansion of the facility and a conditional use permit was granted by the County Planning Commission in nineteen eighty-six. Modifications and the site plan adjustment were approved in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-four by the county and the conditional use, conditional use permit expired in nineteen ninety-six. The applicant is requesting to continue the operation and maintenance of the facility uh, for an additional twenty-five year period. The administration building will be demolished and replaced with a new two thousand eight hundred and forty-two square foot building. It will be moved to the southwest corner of the project site. The operations building will undergo a remodel and add nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet and a carport with remounted solar panels will also be constructed adjacent to Panama Drive. Landscaping and a gate installation, um, around, uh, Panama and Santa Monica Drive is also proposed. The, not the, the Ventura County Coastal Zoning Ordinance, uh, requires P, requires vehicles um, in parking areas to exit onto the public street in a forward direction. The applicant is requesting a waiver of these, of this requirement to allow perpendicular parking along Santa Monica Drive and a backing out of the vehicles onto Santa Monica Drive. Because the lot is irregularly shaped, customers and the public cannot park within the district facility onsite parking area and customer parking will be available along Santa Monica Drive. Currently, there is limited parking, as I said, um, for district, for district employees and the public. With the applicant's proposed offsite parking along Santa Monica Drive, designated parking will be provided to, um, the district's customers. Seven spaces for customers along Santa Monica Drive and seven spaces onsite for employees. The Coastal Zoning Ordinance only requires ten spaces per the proposed use. The County Public Works Roads and Transportation Department reviewed the proposed parking modification request and recommended design features be included to ensure that perpendicular parking along Santa Monica does not create a visual impediment for vehicles making a right turn onto that street. These design features include the installation of no parking signage and painting of the curb red at the corner of Santa Monica and Panama. There are prohibition of onsite vehicle storage and parking within the forty-foot side triangle, which is demarcated with the red line on, um, on the screen. The installation of wrought iron fencing and the installation of, um, non-native invasive plant, native, excuse me, the installation of native non-invasive plants that grow to a minimum of three feet in height at maturity. The applicant, but we will also be required to merge the existing multiple lots into one lot through conditional voluntary merger as existing buildings are built over the property line. The applicant will need to satisfy all the requirements of Article ten of the County Subdivision Ordinance prior to zoning clearance issuance. So planning staff conducted environmental review of the proposed project and determined that the project does qualify for a CEQA exemption pursuant to sections fifteen three oh one, existing facilities, fifteen three oh two, replacement or reconstruction, fifteen three oh three, new construction of small structures, and fifteen three oh four, minor alterations to the land. The review and approval of the conditional, uh, voluntary merger is a ministerial act and is not subject to CEQA. So that, uh, planning staff recommends that your commission find that the project is exempt from CEQA, find that the project, that planning staff made the required findings to grant the CUP and the conditional voluntary merger that, uh, your commission grants a CUP and approved conditional voluntary merger as stated in section I of the staff report. Again, if any member of the public would like to make a comment on this agenda item six B, please email your comments, two hundred and fifty words or less, to the email address on the screen and the, your comment will be read into the record. I'd like to point out that errata, um, errata exhibit eleven includes revisions to the Planning Commission Staff Report, General Plan Consistency Analysis, Exhibit Four and Conditions of Approval, Exhibit Five, but that relate to, um, the square footage of the administration building and the fact that the district also provides trash service to its customers. So staff from the Public Works Roads and Transportation Department and the County Surveyor are available on Zoom to answer any questions. The applicant and, and the applicant's agent have also provided, are also available on Zoom and they will make, be making a brief presentation to your commission, um, after any questions that your commission has of staff. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolero. Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner King?
Thank you, uh, Leonard Bolero. My, my first question is, what is the difference between a waiver and a variance, um, with regard to that head-in parking?
Uh, Commissioner King, the waiver is specifically stated in the Coastal Zoning Ordinance for parking modifications. The applicant has, uh, requested the waiver and there are specific language in the, uh, Coastal Zoning Ordinance that, that requires that the, uh, Public Works Roads and Transportation Department, uh, in consultation with the planning department, review the request.
Okay, I understand that. Um, my next question is, uh, is there, was there any study done about how busy traffic is on Santa Monica, uh, where that, uh, head-in parking would be backing out, um, when folks are done with their business there?
Commissioner King, uh, no formal study was, uh, provided, but the Public Works Roads and Transportation Division and the, uh, Planning Division did, uh, review in detail, um, with the, the applicant's request and the designed features that are proposed by, uh, the applicant and requested by the Public Works Department, um, did, uh, take into account safety of the road and, um, the design of the, uh, parking area.
Okay, so the, um, the, um, oh, shoot. Public Works Agency is confident that there's gonna be no danger to, uh, collisions from traffic backing out onto that street. Is there somebody from Public Works that can answer that?
Yes, there is. We have Gianfranco Lori, who is the Public Works County Traffic Engineer.
Morning Commissioners, I can go ahead and answer that question. With the creation of the sightline triangle and eliminating a prior washdown area, prior additional stalls, making a modification to the fence and the landscaping, we feel confident that there's adequate site distance therefore to reduce or eliminate any potential safety hazards.
Okay, now my final question has to do with condition twenty-eight on the conditions for this CUP. And it, it, the question is this, and I don't know who on staff would answer it. Condition twenty-eight talks about, um, a fee for added impervious uh, areas on the site. However, in the staff report, it says that they're going to be adding twenty-eight thousand pervious areas. So I'm trying to understand if, if there's a net gain or net loss in impervious areas on the site. Did anybody, uh, do that analysis?
Commissioner King, um, I did confirm this week with the Public Works Agency, um, Engineering Services Department that yes, the applicant is, is adding pervious area, that is the landscaping and the road slurring. Um, but they are also adding impervious area with the administration building demo and rebuild. So in terms of the, um, flood, flood acreage fee, which is condition twenty-eight, um, so that relates to pervious structures and county records did, uh, indicate that the fee was never paid. So the applicant is, um, eligible through county ordinance to, uh, get an exemption, uh, for that. So they would not have to pay the fee because, um, that relates to, as I said, pervious area and then demo rebuild of the admin building. Does that answer your question?
Well, maybe and maybe just added more, more to my question. So you're basically saying while condition twenty-eight says they have to pay this fee, you're saying they don't have to pay it because they're gonna be exempted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Boyston?
Um, could you put back up the site plan for a minute?
Um, the slide in front of you is the current site plan. Do you want the?
I don't see it on my screen, I guess.
Oh, sorry, I need to show my screen here. I think my screen is shared, so let me see.
I see you.
Okay.
Perfect. So, um, I understand the triangle, uh, for view. Could you tell me why we, why number one is not landscaped versus just red stripe paving?
Uh, good morning, Commissioner Boyston. So when we worked with Public Works Roads and Transportation, the site triangle really can't be encumbered by anything that would, um, you know, block at the motorist's view as they make that right-hand turn. And so the landscaping is actually gonna go adjacent to the wrought iron fence and it's gonna be maintained at no greater than three feet in height. We wanted to be sure that nothing in that, uh, site triangle, again, would encumber a motorist's view as they make that right-hand turn.
Well, but you still have landscaping to the right of it. Why isn't extended to the left with the same criteria of keeping it low?
Along Panama Drive?
Along Santa Monica at the corner, the, uh, there's landscaping right in that finger planner.
Correct.
To the right. Why isn't number one, um, extended with the same low landscaping rather than paving?
We could add landscaping there. We wanted to make sure that that area is not used for parking and so we had originally had that striped red so that no cars would park there. But definitely we could extend landscaping into that area, which would also deter parking.
Yeah, I think, I think a striped asphalt, people, if they're really desperate for a space, will park in it.
That's right.
Very well.
The other thing on condition twenty-four, it describes the fencing along Panama Drive as being wrought iron. But in fact, uh, majority of it is a solid, solid screen wall. So, and it's not mentioned in condition twenty-four that that's one of the conditions of the fencing. So I was wondering, is twenty-four saying instead of what's shown as solid wall, it needs to be wrought iron?
I believe that the wrought iron would go where number four is and around the corner. Um, and so I, I think it's, it's both masonry and wrought iron. We do have that carport. And I believe that carport has a masonry wall, um, along Panama Drive. Is that correct, Christina? Yeah.
And then the, the other question, because of the increased setback along Panama Drive, isn't there an opportunity to the property line of creating landscaping along that wall to help discourage graffiti and to lessen the impact of this facility and the wall, uh, along the street?
You know, it's pretty tight there, um.
We're talking vines or something on a wall.
Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely, um, incorporate that as part of the landscape requirement.
And then lastly, could you, once you combine all these lots, could you describe to me how you get, what is front, side, and rear of, of this kind of lot that has essentially, uh, it's a corner lot with, uh, street frontage on three sides? How do you?
Want to take that? Oh, good question. So clearly the front's gonna be on Santa Monica Drive. But when you look at these corner lots, oftentimes the front setback is both the, uh, Santa Monica Drive and Panama Drive. So what we're calling out the front is Santa Monica Drive, the side Panama and the existing developed areas to the left and the rear being the alley.
So why not Panama also as a front?
We could call it out as a front. However, the, uh, Planning Division determined that Panama Drive would be the side so that they could, uh, incorporate the carport without having to, um, set it back the twenty feet so that they could be, due to the irregular shape of the lot.
Okay, I, it was there, what's the criteria that they came to you for saying they needed a carport on the street?
Again, this was a site plan design that they had proposed, um, and we worked with them in order to provide, um, onsite parking for their, uh, company vehicles. And, you know, it, it's a challenging site and so originally they had more parking along Panama Drive, but because of this site triangle design constraint, we actually eliminated one of those parking spaces. Uh, they had overparked and we actually reduced it to the minimum parking, uh, requirements. And so you see three parking spaces along the administration building and then the four parking spaces underneath the carport.
So, but it's not a code requirement, um, that a certain number of their spaces need to, need to be covered in a carport. It's just as their desire.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commission, questions for, from Commissioners? Seeing none, I will ask Ms. Bolero to unshare her screen and asked if the applicant has a presentation.
Yes, one second.
Good evening, uh, good morning Commissioners. This is Kevin Kohan with Elevator and Tunnels.
Can you hold on a second, sir?
Sure.
There we go. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Kevin Kohan. I'm with Elevator and Tunnels. I'll be, uh, presenting a short PowerPoint. Uh, Christina, would it be helpful for me to share my screen or will you be sharing yours?
Uh, please share your screen, Kevin.
Great. Great. Hopefully everyone can see the screen. Today, we're, uh, going to be discussing just a short, uh, brief, uh, discussion of what Christina nicely presented today. Um, again, my name is Kevin Kohan. I've been representing the project applicant, uh, Channel Islands Beach Community Service District, uh, through this entitlement process. Uh, the district general manager is Pete Martinez, who is on the call today as well to answer any questions. Our architect is Jeff Zuck with Coastal Architects and Randy Chapman with CCE Design Associates, who's also available for any questions. As you heard today, um, this project has gone back since nineteen ninety-six, uh, where the CUP had originally expired for the, uh, site making it illegal, non-conforming use. The district has been working with the county on, on bringing this into compliance with zoning code and building code requirements. Uh, we held a community outreach meeting, uh, in September seventeenth of twenty nineteen, uh, early with the local neighborhood, given we're within a single family zone to discuss what, uh, they like to see in the neighborhood and working with, uh, with their environment. Uh, the biggest comments we got was providing parking for, uh, the residents for after hours, given that the project site, uh, area has limited parking, uh, within the residential, uh, area. So they look to use our facility for additional parking as needed after hours. Um, so that was why our original design had additional parking, uh, proposed. Uh, this is how the district serves the community. Uh, they're responsible for providing water distribution, sanitation and trash collection to the district. They serve about ten thousand customer, customers and two thousand two hundred service connections. Um, and, uh, they're legally authorized but not obligated to provide street maintenance and improvement, street lighting and underground of overhaud, overhead utilities, fire protection and police protection. Um, and we're, uh, they provide this services, uh, through the district, um, to its residents of about ten thousand customers. Uh, this is a conceptual rendering of, of the site plan you saw. This is a conceptual rendering of, of the site plan you saw today, giving the idea of the form and amassing of the building and making it coherent and compatible with other kind of surrounding residential uses. This shows the landscape buffer in the front, and Commissioner Boydston had, had mentioned the no, no parking area shown, shown here with the hash area. And then the opportunity for a line of sight along Panama, Santa Monica Drive. The, if there's any additional questions or comments, we're here to answer, but wanted to make a short introduction, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner King?
Thank you. Mr. Kohan, my first question is, and this may be for your client, but just how much walk-in traffic is there at the service center?
Thank you.
Do we normally have four people in there at the same time?
I'll let Mr. Pete Martinez answer that question.
Yes. Hello, Pete Martinez, General Manager with the Channel Islands Beach District. To answer your question, it's very rare that we have, you know, more than one person in the office at one time. And throughout, throughout the day, it, it depends on what time of the month that if it's, bills are due, that type of thing, you know, we may get 10 customers in the office. You know, that would be considered one of the busiest days. Most of the payments, a lot of payments are still done online. So yeah, hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, I guess when I thought about it, I thought, you know, with the modern technology, I would think fewer and fewer people would be coming into the counter for any reason. But I was just trying to get a sense of just how busy it would be and how much that would impact the front parking there. My next question is, and Mr. Kohan kind of reiterated the issue when they had the community meetings, and that is, clearly, there's a parking issue with residents on the street that should have nothing to do with your operation. However, we're going to apparently add parking. How are you going to control what parking is reserved for customers during the day? Versus how much may be impacted by the residents seeing extra parking spaces and pulling in there? Are there going to be signage or anything to control that?
Do you like to answer that question?
Sure. Yeah. So currently, we have signage today. So the residents around the neighborhood are currently used to it. Basically stating the sign state during business hours. You know, parking is only for employees of the district, and clearly stated what those business hours are. So I feel like the, the residents have a pretty good understanding, and they, they do comply, and we do not have any issues with that currently. So.
Nevertheless, I would think that a condition would be in order for that signage, because there's nothing compelling the district to have that signage. Would you be amenable to such a condition? Center hours doing it?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. And, and my last question, in the rendering, I didn't see the carport roof. Was that just an oversight or?
Yeah, so, go ahead, go ahead.
That, that is, that is something that we were not showing in the conceptual. The carport is an option to provide solar in the, in the future for the site. So there's an opportunity to provide a carport with solar. This conceptual, we remove the carport just to give the viewer a sense of what the site looks like without, without any obstructive view, so you can see the building in the rear of the lot.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, because it's part of the project description in the CUP, are you or are you not going to put the carport in as part of this project?
The site plan and product description describe the carport, which will be included in the project. Again, for presentation purposes on the conceptual, that was just to give an idea to the viewers of what the site could look like.
So your answer is that yes, you're going to put it in the carport when you do the rest of the project. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boydston?
So I'm a little confused, because in the packet that I saw, there's a completely different building design for the two buildings than what you showed in the conceptual. So I'm confused on which, which designer are you going with? What is the design?
Good catch, Commissioner Boydston. So the original design that was shown in the package was our first iteration. What we're showing on this conceptual is a new iteration that the district has discussed with its board members, which we're showing today. But what's before you for the hearing is regarding the CUP extension. All design and discussion of design review process will be during plan check, building plan check.
Isn't that part of our purview on a CUP, the actual design of the project?
Commissioner Boydston, this is Jennifer Trunk. Yes, the hearing exhibit is what's before you today. The district did not provide us the updated concept elevations of the building that they presented this morning. By all means, what you are deciding on today is the hearing exhibits before you. If the district wants to come in and change the elevations, they can do that through a permit adjustment, which is administratively processed with the planning division.
Sounds like a good way to skirt having us review the design of, of the project.
Well, it's definitely, the, the exhibits that are in your packet is what's before you and what the planning commission will be deciding on. By all means, the permit adjustment is a discretionary process. It is done administratively. It is, falls under the 10% threshold and other qualifications for a site plan adjustment. But we can notice the planning commission during that 10-day appeal process following the permit adjustment.
Chair McVale and Commissioner Boydston, an additional option for your commission would be to continue the item, since this is the first we're hearing this morning about the design, architectural style and things being changed. And that's certainly before you, that would give the opportunity for the applicant to elect to make the changes, staff's review of that, and then bring it back to the commission for your formal action.
Yes. Well, I would just state that the design that was presented in the package is dramatically, dramatically different than that rendering we just saw. And including not having the carport, because quite frankly, the project looks better without a carport on the street. It's not, so you can show it any, you know, to the public any better. It is better.
And if, I, I just wanted to add that I think Mr. Kohan mentioned CUP extension. And just to be clear, this is an, an extension, correct? Okay. And I would agree that a carport, I, I don't understand the purpose or added value that that brings to the project. And if line of sight on that corner is a concern, I don't think a carport helps that issue.
Commissioner, this is Jennifer Trunk again. You're absolutely right. The, as we saw in the rendering, the wrought iron does extend around the corner to provide that line of sight for motorists with the masonry wall coming about halfway, three quarters along Panama Drive.
Commissioner Dukas?
Good. I see the rendering that the applicant has presented to us today.
Sure, I can share my screen again. So this design was proposed during our last board meeting as a way to save costs for the development. The district is looking at a more traditional design to be, number one, to make it more compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And number two, to have more of a streamlined design to help save costs, construction costs. This is something that we're showing today, that we're hoping to bring back to the county as a permit adjustment, design adjustment, given the, the constraints on cost to the district. My hope today is that we can proceed with the CUP extension and in regards to design of the structure, work that out with the county through that permit revision.
I'm not, I'm, okay, so, so what I am observing is our, our exhibits and, and what I reviewed, and then looking at this, which doesn't have the carport with the solar on it, and it has a very different-looking building. What would you, what would you see? And, and also, I don't understand saying it's an extension of a CUP if the CUP expired in 1996. So what, where should we go from here? I would like to direct that question to Ms. Trunk.
Morning, Commissioner Idukas. Thank you. We can continue this item to April 21st, so we can bring forth the current proposal that the district is pursuing. I'd like to just make the correction that this is not an extension. You are correct, Commissioner Idukas and Commissioner Garcia. This CUP expired, so they're requesting a new CUP for a 25-year term limit. And then just to follow up on Commissioner King's question about signage, we do have a condition, condition number 23, that requires the applicant to come in with any signs for planning divisions review.
Any other questions of commissioners?
Well, what do we need to do to, to, to stop this now and, and have it continue to date certain April 21st?
Close the public hearing and then have us make that motion.
And did we, for Secretary Rodisco, did we check to see we have any public comment on this project?
Well.
We would want to take those public comments.
Clear on what the project is, are we?
Well, we would still want to give the opportunity, if we have any members of the public wanting to speak on this item.
We still have an obligation to the public to allow them to speak if they want to. We already know what the motion's going to be, but they still have a right, since they've called in or zooming in, if there is anyone online, to give them an opportunity to speak.
Okay, so I don't have any public comments at this time. Members of the public who wish to speak, please press the raise hand button on Zoom now. Or if participating by telephone, please press star and then nine to be queued. This is for agenda item 6B.
We will take a five-minute break, and if we come back and there's no comments, then we will close the public hearing.
Chair McVale, before you take your break, I'd like the applicant team during that five minutes to consider the date of either April 21st or May 5th. I want to make sure that there's ample time for the applicant and their architect to make adjustments, provide the package. It's back to staff. Staff will need to do a review of that. So either April 21st or May 5th, May 5th might be the better one, just to ensure they have adequacy of time, and we don't have to renotice. So I'd like them to consider that during the break. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Five-minute break. Secretary Rodisco, would you please unshare your screen? Because the only other commissioner I can see is Commissioner Dukas. Thank you. Okay, I see that we're all five back, so I will reopen the hearing. Secretary Rodisco, did we have any Zoom or phone calls come in? Secretary, did we have any Zoom or phone calls come in?
No, Chair McVale, there are no Zoom participants or emails.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at this time. And any comments by commissioners? Commissioner King and then Commissioner Dukas.
I like to move that this case be postponed till a date certain of April 21.
There a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dukas. Comments by board members? Commissioner Boyston?
So a couple of things, just as they go back in, in, give us the proper design to review as part of the CUP. I'm not in favor of carports on, on streets. So I would ask them to look carefully at, at getting rid of that feature or stepping, stepping it back. Also, I think I don't, I don't understand the need for a solid fence along Panama. When in fact, you're just trying to secure the yard. I think the transparency is much more friendly to the, to the neighborhood. And that it inhibits graffiti, which if you look at the chain link fence they have out there now that has slats in it, it's been tagged a number of times. So seeing that they don't have any open storage, I don't see why, why that can't be a wrought iron fence. And I don't see why between the wrought iron fence and the street that some planting can be done to obscure the front of trucks or parking along that way. Much more friendly kind of openness. I'd also like to see, and we see it in some of their elevations. I'd like to see the first house that abuts this property shown in its entirety. So we can on Hollywood and also Santa Monica, so that we can start to see the scale of any building that they're going to propose with the actual neighbor next door. So I'd like to see how that works. I will say in a positive sense that I think the new sort of design approach, which is more residential in feeling, contextually could work better than the design that was, was presented to us in our packet today. So I think that's a positive step to start looking at the kind of sizes and forms of the buildings and in the, in the area and, and conform more to them. I think that's a good direction. So those, those would be my comments. And supporting, I also will support the, you know, movingness and coming back. Because I, I think not to do that is just a sort of way to skirt around us. I think we should be reviewing the design. I don't think it should be administrative review. Thank you.
Director Ward, as part of the motion, have they indicated a date that they would prefer?
Yes, Chair McVale, I believe they've confirmed that April 21st would work. This means they do need to work very expeditiously over the next couple of weeks to complete the information. Hearing from Commissioner Boyd, Vice Chair Boydston, the context will be important. So if the applicant can reconfirm that the April 21st date works, they should do that. Thank you.
Yes, that date does work for us. And Commissioner Boyston, thank you for your comments. I made a note of it here. So we appreciate that insight.
Just a reminder, Mr. Cohen, the public hearing has been closed, just for future reference. Let's see, any other comments? Commissioner Garcia, none? Okay, I have a couple of comments. One, I liked the second design much better. Two, having a brother-in-law that had a beach house on Pasadena Avenue in that area. And looking at the original photos from staff, at least the house adjacent to it on Santa Monica is a two-story house. And I would assume the one on the, I guess, would be the west side, the narrow part on the upper end would be a two-story house. But I have, I guess, a little bit more faith in staff. And so I'm going to have to vote no on the motion. So here we know any other comments? Do we have a clear idea what the motion is to postpone the hearing until April 21st?
Yes, Chair McVale, it would be a continuance to a date certain of April 21st, 2022.
Secretary Disco, will you pull the commission, please?
Commissioner Idukas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boydston?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chair McVale?
No. Okay, the motion carries four to one. Thank you applicants. Appreciate your comments and being here. We'll move on to item number seven. Seven, report by planning director on board actions and other matters.
Thank you, Chair McVale. I do have a couple of items to cover. We had our border supervisors hearing this last Tuesday. This is where the farm worker ordinance, update to the farm worker regulations of our NCZO, non-coastal ordinance occurred. It was successfully approved by the board. They did make some adjustments, and I wanted to share those adjustments with you on the second here. They made an adjustment in regards to the survivorship aspect of the farm worker family members. You recall that was part of your deliberations as well. And they adjusted that to focus on the surviving household members would be changed to be surviving spouse or domestic partner. They also had questions in regards to whether or not the maximum rent for a farm worker unit, whether it be the individual unit or in a complex, would be retained at an affordable rental amount. And so that was a question that we were unable to answer or verify. We think there may be some state law limitations. So they gave direction outside of adoption of the ordinance for that to be researched over the next 18 months and returned to the board. They also had some good dialogue in regards to what are the best practices that might relate to ensuring that the threshold for individual kitchen and other facilities and farm worker group quarters should be addressed? And how is that looked at in other locations of the state? So they gave direction that we, for the research, the inclusion of a threshold, meaning what would be the triggers for a kitchen or other facilities in a farm worker group quarters? And we would address that as we work on the countywide farm worker housing study and action plan. That, as you may recall, was program E in our new housing element. And we've already commenced work on that effort. And so we would complete that research as part of that effort, which is really trying to look at best practices and how we can further additional farm worker housing in our county, including working with our cities. So that was the direction on Tuesday. And now we move into the efforts of implementation, updating application, website information and staff training. And as we all hope, these ordinance changes will result in additional farm worker units in our community. And I look forward to see some hopeful new housing during the next year. One item is a reminder for your Form 700, those are due. So please, if you've seen your email notices about that, it's an online filing as you've done in years past. That's due by April 1st. And then lastly, looking ahead on your calendar, you do have an item on March 17th. This is the review for a general plan amendment and zone change. And Ohio Valley Area Plan designation change to open space and to process a tentative parcel map to combine four lots into one larger lot. This is referred to as the Turtle Conservancy as the applicant. And this is located at 1802 McNeil Road and 4205 Thatcher Road in Ohio. And then you just established an item for April, so April 21st will be the continued item. And then we have items queuing up for the month of May. And those are my reportable items for you. Thank you.
Any questions of Director Ward? Seeing none. Item seven B, items a planning commission may wish to introduce. Does anyone have any? I have one. Director Ward, way back when, I can't remember, a year, year and a half ago, you know, the billywack applicant on Liso Road in Santa Paula filed a, wanted relief from requirements from the planning department. I guess my question is, if you know, has their permit been approved?
No, it has not, Chair McVale. So that item, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't believe Commissioner, Vice Chair Boydston or Commissioner Garcia, some women were part of your planning commission at that time. But you also did not support approving their zone clearance application. And there were violations on the property. And they were, they did appeal to the board and that appeal was going to be heard and they asked for additional time. So it was not heard. That was, I think, October of 2021. And we are still working with the applicant team. So that's the status of that one.
The, the reason I brought it up is I'm not, I don't know when the last code enforcement person's been up there. But as you will know, I have horses up Liso Canyon and a number of times I've seen construction trucks, glass, window glass trucks pull up to that, pull up that road. And so my feeling is that they're, they're doing something that they probably shouldn't be doing. I may be wrong, but I've seen a lot of construction trucks and window glass trucks head up that road when I went to the barn. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
They have various permits, Chair McVale, so it could very well be that certain activity is authorized and appropriate, but not the other zone clearances. But I'll check in with that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Is there any other items before the commission? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you at the next one.
Everybody take care.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye all.